Okay, so we are now going to move into a presentation about our high school bell schedule. And I'm going to welcome Mrs. Williams up to the podium.
Good evening, President Pickle Antonio and members of the board. After yet another long process of study and consideration. I, yes, we have been busy. I am excited to share about a bell schedule change that we will be implementing at Gahan Lincoln High School for the 2425 school year. As you heard tonight from Mrs. Elliott, for the longest, we've had the longest instructional day in central Ohio. But yet we are still not achieving at the same level as other districts. Before I begin my presentation, I just want to make mention that anytime you hear me use the term staff, that is a way to be inclusive, to include all of our staff at Gahan Lincoln High School, teachers, secretary, support staff, aides, athletics, mental health specialists, counselors. So I use staff a lot, but I just want to make mention to that. That is why I do that because that's a very inclusive term of of all of the voices in our building. When our bell schedule project began in the spring of 2022, our goal was to gather feedback from various sources and developing a high school schedule that would help us to improve student success and achievement, increase support and engagement for our students, and then also reallocate time to align with teaching and learning goals of our students and staff. Over the last, thank you, over the last year, the process our steering committee and I have coordinated has been very extensive, has provided us a lot of opportunities to gain feedback from various stakeholders and about our bell schedule and how we should use time at the high school. In the fall of 2022, Committee of Staff met to discuss aspirations for the high school learning and use of time. In April of 2023, the High School Bell Schedule Revision Project was announced at the State of the Schools by Dr. Deagle. Also in April of 2023, stakeholders were surveyed on their bell schedule preferences and and that included sending a survey to middle school families, high school families, high school students, and high school staff. And then in May of 2023, I facilitated a staff and parent guardian bell schedule focus group meeting where they were able to provide us with feedback on the benefits and the challenges of the various schedules, and that was open to any interested staff member at the high school as well as families of the high school. We collected more feedback from staff in August of this school year during one of our regularly scheduled mandatory department meetings. And then lastly, I gathered even more feedback from our students this school year from my principal's advisory group, which is made up of 16 students. There are four representatives from each grade level. So I would not want to go through this presentation without taking an opportunity to express my heartfelt thank you to the 17 staff members at Gahan Lincoln High School that volunteered their time to meet after school to serve on our bell schedule steering committee. This committee definitely included representation from various academic departments and included support staff as well. As I mentioned earlier, the goal of the committee from the beginning was to gather ideas and feedback related to developing a high school schedule that would improve student access and achievement, increase support, and reallocate time in order to align with the the needs of our teaching staff and the the goals of our students. With one of our core tenants being feedback, we offered various feedback opportunities. And we took a multifaceted approach to solicit feedback. Those feedback opportunities included the survey that I discussed a few slides ago that we sent last April to middle school and high school families, as well as all of the GLHS staff members and students. And that provided us with insights from more than 1,600 stakeholders. The breakdown of that is there were 932 student responses in a school of 2,400. I'll tell you that is fantastic. 110 staff responses, 367 high school families responses, and then 252 middle school families responses. As I mentioned earlier, I did facilitate that parent and staff focus group to review the five bell schedule options. And this group reviewed the the schedules and were able to give us and analyze each one, but give us the benefits and challenges associated with those five schedules. We also have collaborated with seven districts currently operating in a block schedule or one of those other options. Staff reviewed and provided feedback on the five proposed bell schedule options during our regular department meeting scheduled in August. And then the new schedule was presented to high school staff members during a staff meeting. And then lastly, I facilitated eight listening sessions. There are eight periods in our day, so I offered a listening session each of the the eight periods where we were able to hear, I was able to hear the the concerns and questions of our staff centered around a bell schedule change. Some of the trends we heard from our stakeholders feedback included a an increased flexibility in personalized learning, access to more electives, the ability for students to work with their own content teachers when they need help, opportunities for students to learn and engage, and experiences aligned to their passions and interests. Fewer classes each day offered for longer periods of time in a decrease in transitions for students, allowing us to spend more time focused on learning. Currently, we have seven transitions in our school day. Using the feedback gathered, that is how we were able to develop the five schedule options that were inspired by research and collaboration with other districts in the state of Ohio. On this slide here, you will see all five options that were explored and shared. The Bell Schedule Steering Committee thoroughly studied the bell schedules for Marysville High School, Mason High School, and Hudson High School. This study included members of our steering committee meeting with staff from each of those three high schools to gather their insights into their respective schedules. One of the options there on the screen is our current schedule that we operate between the two buildings of Clark Hall and Main Campus. And then lastly, there's a final option of a four by four block which simulates definitely a college schedule. You take the same classes for a semester, same four classes for a semester every single day, and then at the semester you take a new for new set of four classes every single day. Across our district, as I talk about instructional minutes, across our district, the block format is used at all three levels. Mainly for the high school at Clark Hall, that is, all the classes here are on a block, and then we do have a few classes at Main Campus that operate in a block. But this chart just shows us how time is currently allotted for English, Language Arts, and Math. And so you might be wondering, well, why just those two subjects? Well, we focused on these two subjects because the comparison between these areas are most, these, these are the most heavily mandated subjects on the state level and federal level departments of education. And we have required state assessments at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high in these areas. So we thought it would be important to highlight the minutes, you know, for elementary and ELA, it's 150 minutes daily. In math, it's 80 minutes daily. Middle school, it's a range in both ELA and math between 80 and 84. And then at the high school in a traditional schedule, it is 46 minutes daily. So starting in the 2425 school year, Gahan Lincoln High School operate using a modified block schedule, as you see there on the screen. This schedule includes running a traditional single period day on Mondays and an AB block schedule Tuesday through Friday where students will attend up to four classes a day. When I say AB rotating, those of us who have, students have gone through Gahan Lincoln High School, we use a five day rotation of the AB model. This one is consistent where Tuesdays and Thursdays are A days and Wednesdays and Fridays are B days. And if you ever visit the high school in the morning at 7:35, 7:10, the first question we always get is not, how are you doing, Mrs. Williams? What day is it? Is it an A day or a B day? So this can maintains consistency, especially as we're transitioning so many students and staff to this new schedule. This will provide a system of consistency for them to know Tuesdays and Thursdays are A days, Wednesdays and Fridays are are B days. And then Monday, we will run that traditional eight period day. This definitely guarantees three touch points of a class every single week, given a five day week that we are in school. Unlike the A day, B day, five day rotation model, one week you could see a class and a teacher two days, and the other week it would be three days. And this block schedule that you you see here, we have run a block schedule for over a decade now at at Clark Hall specifically. So you know, the block schedule, a concept and format is not totally new to the Gahan Lincoln family. We are also excited that this puts both buildings until we move into our new space. This puts both buildings on the same schedule. I'll be the first to tell you, it is incredibly difficult to manage both schedules. And when it comes to scheduling time, there there are a lack of efficiencies in our master schedule building because of the two schedules that we operate. On Mondays in this schedule, students will attend each of their classes. Those periods are 35 minutes each. And then Tuesdays through Fridays, students will attend four classes per day, and their block class will be 83 minutes. That first block includes Lincoln Live. Okay, so that block is 94 minutes. But Lincoln Live will air four days a week as it currently does right now. And we're excited to be able to still have Lincoln Live kickoff our day for us as we currently do. And then due to our new start time for the high school, as Mrs. Elliott shared with us, and moving to the modified block, we will see a decrease in nine minutes per class per week. But given the multiple and multitude of benefits for a block schedule, using the modified block schedule definitely will allow us to extend class periods, providing time for more in-depth teaching and learning, and we are definitely excited about that, and we see it play out here at Clark Hall as well. The opportunity for students to earn more credits and take up to eight classes if they wish. The ability for students to manage less classes in one day with, which will also lead to reduce homework each night. The assurance, as I mentioned, that students will attend each class three times a week, as opposed to some classes being just two times a week, like our current block schedule, a decrease in transition time for students, which allows us to spend more time in class learning. And the ability for students to have access to their own teachers for support during that independent working time. So we we know from research that increased student performance cannot be attributed to any one particular school schedule or schedule alone. So but what we do know is that time in the classroom and the amount of time that we spend on engaging applications and, you know, hands-on learning and being right there with your content teacher definitely yields stronger achievement and growth. So we did some some researching as well. And according to the American Association of School Administrators, which is a study of more than 100 case studies, dissertations, and reports completed on block scheduling. Some of the the findings there is that after a transition period of transitioning from a traditional schedule to the modified block that I shared, the majority of teachers, administrators, students, and parents were favorable of block scheduling, even after some difficult periods of change. Teachers report feeling greater stress until they learn how to plan for and teach in an extended block of time, but eventually both teachers and students report school becomes less stressful. We heard that from our very own students here at Clark Hall as well. They also indicated that evidence shows that students' grades improve and the number of students on the honor roll increases in the block schedule. And there is sufficient data that suggests that students' academic performance is not harmed. And many individual schools based on several selective variables have reported increases in student performance. The number of discipline referrals to the office, which is my wheelhouse and my administrative team, we, there's a typical decrease between 25 to 50%. And then evidence exists showing in-school suspensions decline and student attendance improves. Also, that same association, the American Association of School Administrators, reported that one in three high schools today operate some form of block schedule. And in some states, more than two thirds of schools use the block. Here in central Ohio, Gahan Lincoln High School, Clark Hall definitely is in a block. Some of our classes at Main Campus are in a block. Marysville High School, and then Hilliard City Schools has their innovation campus that operates in a block, and then Worthington City Schools has Lindworth that operates in a block. Currently, the high school, like I said, operates in a block schedule here at Clark Hall, as well as some of our specialized courses on on Main Campus. And I just want to talk about the many benefits of a block schedule that having that consistency across both of our buildings and when we move into our new building will have on our academic space. There will be more efficient scheduling provided by all classes operating with the same schedule. As I mentioned, building our master schedule request of 2,400 plus students is a tall, tall task, especially when you're operating with two different schedules. Provides increased time for deeper learning that eliminates that feeling of being rushed. Our CPM curriculum calls for is is designed for 60 minutes. This allows us to meet the needs of the CPM curriculum. It also provides opportunity for science labs, rich reading and writing experiences, social studies, simulations, inquiry, learning, and all courses, not just our specialized programs. Opportunity for students to earn more credits and then reduced homework each night. Additionally, we will have the opportunity to maintain late arrival and early release from school. It eliminates, as I mentioned, the feeling of rushing through periods. You get in the class and before you know it, that bell rings and you're off to your next class, still thinking about where you just were. Decreasing the number of transitions within the school day, we all know the safety concerns that we feel when our students cross between Hamilton Road and Havens Corners here. And so reducing the number of times that they have to do that, also the number of times of transitions in our large high school that spans north and south there. Increased opportunity and feasibility for CCP courses for students who are interested, allowing students access to teachers to support learning during their independent work time, and then combining both block periods with that traditional within a week is also a benefit for us. This bell schedule also will promote a variety of instructional strategies and styles that teachers can implement and use within a given period, and we are excited about that. And it will continue to allow us to have access for our students to career center programs, both on campus and at the career centers. So staff voice and student voice, they're both very important to me. And so I would like an opportunity to just share some staff voices regarding the modified block schedule. Here with me tonight, I do have visual art teacher Adam Dormbear and school counselor Annie Printovo. But before I turn it over to them to to speak, I would like to share a few quotes from some of our teachers who currently teach in a block. One teacher said, overall, I feel that I was able to build stronger relationships with all students more quickly in the year than I have ever experienced in the single block period. I also feel less tied to the clock, implementing the workshop model in a 48-minute class period meant that every minute mattered. Now I have time to extend conversations, discussions, and support student and and student support time with greater flexibility. I don't feel the day goes by faster with greater, I do feel the day goes by goes by faster with greater flow, and I am less frazzled at the end of the day. Another teacher said, what I think about teaching and the block schedule for a couple of years is that I absolutely love it. Let me tell you a few reasons why I think teaching in a block schedule works for our students. Deeper connections to students. I don't see my students daily, but I do have the time to get to actually know them. With more time built into class, spending a few minutes here and there, purposefully creating space for community in my classroom has made all the difference. I know my students. They are calmer. I am calmer, and there is time in the schedule to sit next to a student who needs that extra support. There is time to do the lessons that are hard to fit into a rushed 48-minute period. Teaching in a block allows a deeper connection to material to happen. It allows students to work and and me to walk alongside and provide the support and enrichment when needed. It allows me to vary my lessons within each block, to cover different material in different ways, to enact skits, to do simulations, to dive deep into an area of student interest, and to allow activities that need the time for the students to work through the material. Teaching in a block has allowed me to feel like I am teaching with time to breathe. I still have plenty of material to get through, but the pace does not feel like I am always trying to come up for air. Planning is so much better. Working through the material on an A day allows me to tweak and adjust on that B day. If a student misses a day, I train them with where to find the material we went over in class. A block schedule is like what many of our students will face when they go to college. Helping to teach them time management on a block schedule also is a is great for the life they are going to face when they leave GLHS. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to school counselor Annie Printovo, who then will turn it over to our visual art teacher, Adam Dormbear, as they share their insights on a modified block.
Thank you, Jessica. As she said, I'm Annie Printovo. I'm a school counselor at the high school. I'm really excited to be here to share kind of from a perspective outside the classroom, our excitement about the benefits that this schedule will bring for our students. I appreciate being on the committee, this bell schedule committee, to bring that outside perspective while I'm not in the classroom. We, as school counselors and mental health specialists and professionals, it may come as a surprise to you or not, that students come to our office and often share with us their many opinions about their day. And sometimes including the stress of school. We ask a lot of our kids in an eight-period day, 46 minutes, and some of them have seven classes. That's a lot, coming from middle school and going transitioning to high school and ninth grade. There's a lot of not only just transition to a new building, but now adding a lot of extra stress just in trying to manage workload and that executive functioning needs that maybe they just weren't ready for. So with this new schedule, as someone that really works to support the wellness and the mental health of our students, I am really excited for the opportunity for our kids to not only get the time they need to support, to get support in the class with the content, but also just from feedback of students within my own office that experienced the block schedule here at Clark. It really provides them an opportunity to build some really meaningful relationships with their teachers. There's a feeling of that sense of belonging that we really work hard and strive for at the high school. And they feel like they have an adult that actually is able to take the time to work with them on the content that they're learning. I also see a lot of stress reduction in our students that are in the block model. They only have maybe four classes, five classes a day because a lot are upperclassmen, so they leave early or come in later. And as mentioned, just even by Jill about start and stop times, just having the less amount of classes in a day really play a role in their mental health and their stress level. The other thing about the block schedule, I really think that it will help, as a member of our MTSS team, I really see a benefit in all levels of learners. For some of our students that are high-end and are taking multiple AP courses and are in honors classes, there's a lot there in those courses, and we see the stress of those students in our offices. And so by providing them the time to really feel prepared and manage the workload that goes along with those courses, I think will really improve some mental health. But also for our students that are struggling, it provides us time with our students to provide interventions, differentiate our teaching to all levels within the class, where in 46 minutes, we're just trying to get content out, so not as rushed rushed as Jessica had stated. So I'm just really excited again from an outside lens of the classroom and working with students and their wellness. This is really going to benefit them. So thank you guys for providing the space for me to come and share that today. Next, Adam Dormbear.
Right. Good evening. My name is Adam Dormbear, and I teach at Lincoln High School. So a lot of what I was going to say was already said, so I don't want to repeat a lot of that. I do want to reiterate that it really is a lot less stressful when we have a block schedule as opposed to a period, especially coming from a department where we have like half of us prefer shorter timeframe, but others prefer the longer timeframe depending on the subject. Because I'm part of the VPA Department, Visual and Performing Arts. So like for some of our subjects, like we really need that longer timeframe to really actually have a successfully educational day and not feel like we're rushing just to get everything through in like a very small minute of time. And then we have other ones that maybe don't really require as much planning or cleanup or preparing just in general. So like a smaller class time works for them. And I think with this new schedule, it's a nice medium. Because our current blocks are like 100 minutes and our current periods are 46 minutes, and this falls just about in between. So it gives more time for those teachers who typically teach on a period, allowing them to get to know their students more because they have them for more time. It also is a lot stressful because they're only going to have maybe four classes a day, possibly three, depending on the schedule. So it's a lot less work on the teacher's hand. And then on the block side, for those of us who are teaching in the blocks, even though it is less time, it is still plenty of time to still like have a very good productive day to get everything covered. So like I said, I think this is a very good medium and a great way to actually meet the needs for all teachers and all subjects, especially from a department that covers many different things, having teachers both like pro and against blocks. So I think this is a really good medium in between. So yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam and Annie. So as I mentioned, so I'm going to talk about the use of time in the block. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, the block format is used at all three levels. And this chart shows how time is currently allocated across the three levels. And as you can see, we have our high school former schedule there, and then the high school modified block minutes. So for ELA and math, we are going from 46 minutes daily to 83 minutes every other day and 35 minutes on Monday. So getting closer to our elementary and middle school colleagues and students when it comes to instructional minutes. There are different ways to structure instructional time within a block. And here is an example of how that time can be structured in a general instruction lesson, so a general classroom. On those Mondays, when you have the 35 minutes, opener, bell ringer for 10 minutes, review preview, and then the closure. And it it all happens quick. And honestly, in our current 36 minutes, that's truly what they're using. When you think about attendance and you know, some of the other reminders, right, and classroom procedures that they have to go over, that time is is taken away and teachers are left with in our current periods, about 35 minutes to get through that. And then Tuesday through Friday in the blocks, the 83-minute periods, that's a snapshot of how the time can be broken down in the opening teacher-directed lessons. And you can see there, it's 10 to 15 minutes. We're not talking stand-in lecture for the 43 or 53 minutes. It's it's teacher-directed for 10 to 15, and then a lot of student engagement opportunities for the majority of that block. And that is the time the kids need. You see there, it's 43 to 53 minutes that kids get for that that engagement piece. And in our current periods, it's 46. They're not getting 43 to to 53 minutes at all, right? It's more of the 35. And then in lab or performance, like task-oriented, performance-based lessons, this chart here just outlines again the time on the Mondays, the 35-minute period is identical to the general lesson, but then Tuesday through Friday in the block, 83 minutes. You see there, they have quite a bit of time for that lab or performance base, or the opportunity to do some station rotations at 58 to 63 minutes, a significant increase for our students and staff who teach in performance-based classes and lessons for our kids. Okay? So in our new schedule, students will receive instruction on the same content standards as they would in a traditional single-period schedule. The delivery of the content will look different as longer periods allow for learning opportunities and application, as I have probably mentioned a million times this this evening, and it And it goes deeper into the content. And teachers will be able to employ a diverse level of instructional strategies to utilize within the block to keep students engaged. You know, engagement is a question when it comes to block. How do you keep students engaged? Incorporating those interactive activities, the hands-on projects, providing opportunities for learning that caters to their their interests and their passions and their learning styles. And then short, structured breaks. We currently do that here at Clark Hall and some of our classes at main campus. But it's intentional lesson planning and including those short, structured breaks. And also in in the research that I have done, furniture also helps with engagement. And so, you know, as we move into our new school, we will have lots of furniture that we can be flexible with to to help with that. And so it's always important for us to measure the success of any anything that we do. And so our success of the modified block schedule will be measured on on these few things here. Increased academic performance on our district map assessments, end-of-course exams that we do in the the fall or the winter and spring, college entrance exams and AP exams. Improved attendance, decreased discipline referrals, and increased student sense of belonging. So with anything, you know, as we begin this journey of full implementation into this new schedule, it's important for us to like think ahead, what are our next steps? And so for for us, we we need to build the new schedule aligned to the new school starts time in preparation for student course requests coming in in January. And so with our student information system, we will start to build that out. Continue professional development focused on instructional practices that promote engagement and deeper learning in the block schedule. And to be honest, we we have started laying that groundwork this year in our professional development and our learning at the high school through inquiry learning. Staff, you know, in this discussion are now seeing that connection, and we are excited to work alongside our curriculum team to continue to build that capacity in our teachers and prepare them for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and beyond. And the professional learning is ongoing. It will continue into next year. It will not just stop at the end of this school year and say, oh, we've got it, we're ready. It will be continuous learning. We will work on, as as I was talking about, working on our curriculum mapping for courses and then begin lesson planning for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, okay? I just want to say I am extremely grateful for this space to be able to share all of the hard work of our committee, the work that went into this project, the time, the effort. And throughout this process, I've just been extremely grateful for the continuous feedback from all stakeholders regarding what Gehanna Lincoln High School not only means to them, but what we want to see for our students and our staff. And, you know, the redesign of the the high school experience is a challenge that we are all up to, but and we are excited to take on. And I will say, you know, just in general, you know, from our staff, it has been received with great positivity. And, you know, obviously, the questions are there, right? Because it's new, and we are excited about the change and working through the intricate details of our new schedule. And again, thank you for this time this evening to be able to share this work with each of you. So at this time, I'm going to open it up for any questions.
Do you have something, Mrs. Warren?
You know how that goes.
Yes.
I applaud, I my daughters had classes at Clark Hall as well as at main campus and and their investment in the classes at Clark Hall were much greater than the the short daily periods at main campus. And so I totally endorse your efforts and appreciate all the work that is going into this. And I think we will see academic achievement increases and attendance. And I think I think it will be very productive. Thank you.
Thank you.
I I'm just blown away by both presentations tonight. The detail, the amount of work over many months from all the teams involved. Yeah, this isn't, that's in addition to your day jobs, which are very full and busy. And so please know that we acknowledge that as well. It was only three short years ago that Lily and Evan were at the high school. And so a lot of the things you're talking about, I like was thinking back to the stress I heard from them. You know, the ability to ask more questions, to spend more time with their teachers. And those teachers, they were able to form those relationships with or who I still hear about today that made a difference to them and impacted their next phase. So I I see the benefits that this is going to bring to our students. And change is always hard, but I also again applaud all of you for leaning into that change, knowing that it's going to be what's best for our students. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, just I have one question and then I've got a comment. And the question, I think I know the answer to it, but it wasn't apparent to me the first time I I heard from you. And so, like I said, I know the answer to it at this point. I just want to make sure that it's kind of clear to everyone. But at the beginning of the presentation, you talked about the opportunity that the blocking provides to students to take an additional class, perhaps? Can you just explain that a little bit more so that that's really clear to everybody why it's different in the block versus the way the schedule is now?
Absolutely. So in our current schedule, which is eight periods in the day, one of those periods has to be lunch. So we have lunch periods four, five, and six in our day. So that takes up one academic period in student's schedule. So, you know, as Mrs. Printovo said, we do have a lot of students who take seven classes. We have students who take six, and then obviously our seniors who are extraordinary, you know, they may take five. But what we were able to do with this schedule is lunch now is its own time slot, and it's not taking up an academic period. So lunches are thirty minutes. And we are able to get our students through that cafeteria. And I I didn't mention this, but we will maintain all three lunch periods as we currently do now. And in the block schedule, each day, because lunch is no longer an academic period, they are able to take four academic classes in a school day for a total of eight classes for the year. And so it provides that opportunity. We do process quite a few flex credit applications because kids can't fit things that they are interested in into their schedule. We have kids who have to choose programs or classes because it does not fit into their schedule. So we are extremely excited about the opportunity for those who have faced those schedule challenges before to be able to take those classes. And those who have the aspirations to accelerate if they so choose or take multiple CCP classes now instead of one. And it it definitely affords a lot of opportunity, just having that one additional class period available to you to be able to take something that you are extremely interested in. Absolutely. Yes, it definitely provides an opportunity for students to recover those credits within the school day. And having a a teacher or someone there with them. If you are recovering multiple credits, you might only be able to do one, right? In a school year, this would actually allow a student probably to grab two in a school year if they so choose.
Thank you for that additional explanation. And thank you really for all of the work that has gone into this. Again, this is a, this is a, I think, a dialogue that's been happening in the district for a very long time. I really appreciate, again, just the depth and breadth that that you went to in this iteration of that dialogue. Especially important to me was the hearing the staff voices and the student voices. I also have two of my three kids who've been in the high school. And as they got to understand the opportunities to take block classes at Clark Hall, I mean, and my kids are just two kids in the district who who got to make choices. But my own kids, even with math, I mean, that their choice was always to come and take in the in the block format. And I guess, again, it's it's just anecdotal, it's two kids. But the the teachers that they talked about, the relationships that they were able to build, it it did come from those classes where there was that extra time. Thank you. Do you want to talk a little bit about how how families will find out more about what's going on?
So tomorrow, it sounds like they're going to get quite a bit of information because they will also receive a a video of me explaining the process. So which is a little bit shorter in addition to tonight's presentation and FAQ. So I'm excited for them to be able to have that information to answer all the questions and wonderings, and I know it won't probably answer everything. And in addition to our website, will be updated, so it will be on our website as well. So it will be in the newsletter tomorrow and on the website, all of the information.
Wonderful. Thank you. I know it's been a long day. Anybody who needs to leave is more than welcome to leave. Thank you to all of you and to our communications team. It's it's been a lot of work, both of these presentations, projects. Thank you.